Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Melvin Edwards. I am Vice President of the City Council and Chairman of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. We are joined by my colleague to my right, Malo, and to my left, my president, Jesse Letterman. This meeting is being convened to address some of the questions and concern related to the establishment of a historic district along State Street, one of the former site of known previously as Municipal Hospital. And I believe President Tyne has described this. What was his name? Viber, Viber Hospital. I'm going to ask the president to just make a clarification of one of the comments that was made at the last meeting as to the relationship between the Preservation Trust and the Historic Commission as being a catalyst for this request for this establishment of a district. President Letterman?
So, well, I think it's helpful to understand the legislative history of how we arrived at this committee. So, so my understanding is there was a petition submitted to the Historic Commission for a single parcel historic district by members of the Preservation Trust. And my understanding is anybody can petition the Historic Commission for that status. The Historic Commission then accepted that petition, voted to move forward, went through their process, thereby upon final approval from the Historic Commission, it came to the City Council, which is always the next step. We passed it first step out of the local ordinance, and then upon its appearance on our second agenda for second and third step, it was referred to committee. So that is, that is how we are here today relative to this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would it, would it be appropriate for people around the room just kind of walk around? So we're also joined by my colleague, Officer Tim Allen. But if everybody could just identify yourselves with your title, and then get onto the meat of it. Eric, would you like to start?
I'm Erica Swallow, President of Springfield Preservation Trust.
And Sir?
Yeah, my name is Gary Martin. I'm a candidate for City Council of Rogers. Just want to come here and learn more about.
You're welcome.
We've Fitzgerald, Fitzgerald Company, we're a real estate firm representing Viber Healthcare and the State Street property.
Bill Groming, Planner, as Tim Allen is City Council, my colleague.
This is Walsh, Chair of Springfield's Public Commission.
I'm Ken Jay from Springfield, all of them.
Tim Sheehan, Chief Development Officer.
All Talk Hill Reporter, WAMC Public Radio.
Thank you. And we are joined by my colleague, Counselor.
My apologies. No slide intended.
But Counselor Gavon is also. And we also joined by Counselor Gavon, Gavon online, and I, Erica, I mean, I have Chair, Chair Holmes, also, I believe, from Springfield Preservation Trust. And, do you, gentlemen, I'm not sure.
It's, I'm Doug Yo. I'm General Counsel for Viber Healthcare. We're, we're based in Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, outside of Harrisburg, so very appreciative of being able to join by.
And could TJC identify yourself, please? On iPhone. Does anyone know who TJC is? Okay, well, my first question, I guess, then, before we really delve into it, is the owner of this, this place? I know that at the last meeting, there was a representative from Viber, but you don't own the building, correct?
Yes, President, and I'm sorry, I, I, you're, I apologize for not knowing all your names here. But Viber Healthcare is the fee simple owner of the property. It is owned through a wholly owned subsidiary called Viber Real Estate. Viber Healthcare Real Estate Company, too. So we are the owner of the property. And we lease it. Yeah, we are, we do own the property.
Okay, then I, that was not made clear at the previous meetings. In fact, some of the comments that were made that should have been refuted at the time was that no owner had ever attended the commission meetings regarding the complete, I mean, the Historic Commission or the City Council meetings. So.
And what capacity do you own it?
We own it fee simple. We do have a mortgage on it. We, we purchased the property in 2013 when we bought the hospital from Kindred, I forget exactly, Kindred Healthcare at the time. And we operated it as a hospital, as a long-term acute care hospital, and a skilled nursing unit up to, oh gosh, probably about 2018, when economically we couldn't continue it. And so we shut down the hospital portion and the skilled nursing. And we currently have a, a twenty to thirty unit, uh, department, DMH unit that's located in the hospital.
Maybe I, I'll have to rephrase it a little different.
Okay.
Who owns the majority of it? Are you a majority owner?
Yeah, we own both parcels, but we own.
That's, that's not we. I'm saying you.
For Viber, Viber Healthcare, Viber Healthcare owns the property through a hundred percent owned subsidiary called Viber Healthcare Real Estate Company, too, Robin, do LLC. So, and I'm General Counsel for Viber Healthcare.
No, I mean, do you own it, sir? Be very, my, 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 my question is, do you own it?
I am a, I am a minority owner in the, in the entity that owns the hospital.
You are a minority. Where is the majority owner?
Uh, he is, he, uh, he is not in the office today. He's traveling.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, obviously.
We'll be more than happy to provide a full ownership of, you know, as far as that to the council if that's helpful. Your post, post to hearing, as far as exactly the ownership and who owns what?
As, um, as, as a, you know, I, I might look a little young, but I, I'm about to celebrate my fiftieth, and I, I, I come from corporate America, so I do understand exactly, you know, I don't, I mean.
Well, we're close.
I don't, I, I need, I need the majority owners is, is really what I would be interested in speaking with. Not, not individuals who might represent them in any way, you know, I mean, that, that's, that's easy to do. I mean, I would say.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We'd be more than happy to be able to set up a time where you could talk with Mr. Hollinger. So.
And, and that's his name?
Yeah, his, his name is Brad, Brad Hollinger, H O L L I N G E R.
Okay, it was very difficult, um, it being in my ward to even identify who he was. Um, and that is always disparaging to me and my colleagues, you know, I just, so, I mean, I, I would like to meet him. I'm sure we want to know who he is.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no issue. I mean, I, I believe, though, he is listed as an authorized agent in the filing with the Secretary of State for Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, yeah, you know, his, he is, he's been disclosed, so we're not hiding him from anything from that state.
Oh, but he was, he's very difficult for us to get in contact with. I've never spoken with him. None of my colleagues have spoken to him. That's, that's just, you know, when you come to the city of Springfield, a lot of our constituents and our colleagues, we've had a lot of, um, vacant landlords and property owners. So it's up to us who represent those individuals to make sure that they're represented properly. And then when you don't have a majority owner to come in and say, hi, let's, you know, do a little, let's break some bread and say some tea. They don't, you know, let's, let's, let's.
That's very, very nutshell. Just stay in the stand.
Thank you, now. So, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we've been joined by Judge Payne. Thank you, sir, for your attendance. As you are aware, there is, there is a intent or a feeling that we would, are under consideration to create a historic district. We have been, it's been implied or suggested that you, as the owner or representative owner of this property, is in opposition to that. I'd like to afford you an opportunity this time to kind of share what your concerns are and your opposition to the creation of this district with the council soul shows.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick frank question before he, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I believe your name is Doug, right?
Doug, yes.
This is Counselor Victor David, also, of Forest Park. Just one quick question. You say you're a minority owner. I, I believe it is entirely possible that I bespared you. But did you also say that you were representing as counsel or?
Yeah, I act as General Counsel for Viber Healthcare.
So you are an attorney for Viber and you own?
I have a very small ownership interest in it.
Very small. Okay, thank you.
Okay, would you, would you mind like to comment on why you would be opposed to this proposal?
The, you know, part of the problem that we would have is that we have, you know, we have challenges as far as with regard to the marketing of the property as is, you know, we have, do we do have zoning issues? There's really no demand with regard to an office or medical waste under the current setting. You know, we, you know, our operations at the DMH unit are going to be winding down here in July, and we really have no additional plans as far as for the use of the property. So, you know, our intention would be as far as to market it and see if we could sell it to another party that could use the space. And by having this historical property put on a parcel that basically joins another parcel, we make it very, very diff, very challenging for us as far as to, to market it for future use. You know, and I, Mr. Fitzgerald, who we've been working with for, Bill, I'm not sure, probably about four, three or four years now, as far as marketing it, you know, has been, you know, we, we've had, we had very little interest in it so far, and you know, part of the things that we've been trying to do, we've been advised by, by them, is that it could, you know, probably the best use of it would be for multifamily housing, which we understand has been, there's been objection to that by the mayor and mayor's office and the local community, which I believe is Pine Point Community, a council. So, you know, and, and have that over. I mean, the building has been vacant for over twenty years. It's, it's, it's in disrepair. It's, you know, we have not used it, you know, utilities have been shut off on it. And, and as far as it would be, it would be, again, a very much of a challenge as far as to renovate that and putting the additional overlay on it would make it, it would, would, again, very, make it very, very difficult for us.
Any questions?
Yes, if I may.
Sure. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been a city counselor for, I've been reelected a few times. And it's basically in my ward. I know the neighborhood councils and I, you know, it's really, you talking about the Pine Point Council is probably a few miles up the road. Okay, like where I live actually, like a couple streets from the actual area. I don't know you personally, okay? Have you ever tried to reach out to any of me or the warded five councilor? Because I, I've never in my life ever spoken to any of you guys. So when I say sometimes I might be a new counselor and you might not know who I am, but Counselor Letterman is a counselor at large. And he's very accessible. Have you ever tried to reach out to me or Counselor Ben Letterman? He lives in my area.
Through our representatives, I know that we've had multiple discussions with, I believe his name is Tim Sheehan of the Planning Commission.
Yes, and, and, and with all due respect, Tim Sheehan does a great job, fantastic job. He works for us and the mayor. He does a fantastic job. When you're talking about the actual council body. Okay, we do, you know, we are the ones who do the bells and whistle in comparison to the actual mayor. And I know the City Council President lives in the actual area. The president of the City Counselor, Council, have you had a chance to call him or me? And I actually live there. I know you talked to the mayor, but I'm just asking, out of respect for the actual constituents and who we are, have you spoken to, to the council president at all?
I didn't, I did not.
I know you didn't speak to me, but have you talked to him?
I did not. I, to be honest with you, we've been working with our local brokers up there as far as with regard to that. And I'm not sure who they've contacted with or touched with regard to it from that standpoint, Mr. Brown.
And, and, and the only, and I don't hold it against you. I really appreciate you being here, but we have, uh, like, the, the, we have different assets and landlords that even in my area, that's been a problem. So.
Yeah, no, and, and again, I think probably that might not be a bad suggestion, and we would be more than welcome to, as far as establish some type of discussion as far as with the local council. Me, we are open to suggestions with regard to the use of the property. You know, but we want to make sure with regard to it that it's the best use that we can, we can, um, can be done for the community. And again, we're, we're, we are a healthcare provider. We're not a developer. We're not a real estate owner. You know, we, 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 when we, we, when we did the transaction back in 2013, we, we basically, we needed, we had to take title to it because we could not get a, you know, to, any other type of financing as far as to, because of the age.
I do understand that, sir. But, you know, as a healthcare provider or any business entity, there are certain things that, you know, you have to kind of like do. But I do appreciate you.
Thank you. May I recognize our Counselor Gavon, please?
Chair, yes, thank you so much for, um, having this meeting so that we can have this discussion about this property. I think that this is a very valuable property to the city of Springfield. We are the city of homes. We're very historic. Some parts of our city are very historic, and I believe this is one of those properties. And you, Mr. Douglas, are in Pennsylvania, you said, right? So you haven't seen the property, and I'm wondering if, you know, someone might take the opportunity to come and look at it, because I think, you know, you're looking for options for the use of the space. I think that might be a really great office building, providing healthcare, like you said, maybe it's dentist's office, mental health therapy offices or something like that. It is something that is important to the Historic Commission here in the city of Springfield, and I think it's something that we need to really think about and consider, you know, before we think about knocking it down, right? Because I think that's what I heard may happen. And, um, I personally, as a city counselor in Ward Eight, that's not my ward, of course, but I represent the entire city because I work all over the city. I think that it's something that we have to really consider and think critically about so that we don't, you know, um, rush to, to judgment on the building and on the, on property itself. So that was, um, that's my comments. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel, President Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to bring us back for a minute to sort of the agenda item that we have before us today, which is whether or not the City Council should pass final standing on the ordinance to create a single parcel historic district. So I have a couple of questions for the General Counsel, that's here, or for, or for their representatives in the room, and then a couple of questions for our attorney. So Douglas, sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's, it's Yo, like Yo Adrian. Just remember, be with Yo Adrian, and you have it.
I gotcha. So Attorney Yo, thank you for being here, and we're glad that we can accommodate you virtually. You know, this is part of the reason why we've made this investment in higher participation so that we can have meetings exactly like this, and we're glad to see it paying off. Relative to your concerns on whether or not this should become a single parcel historic district, it's my understanding, based on your testimony today, that it is essentially because you feel it would make it more difficult for you to market the property. Is that an accurate characterization?
Yes, sir.
And did you receive, did you, go ahead?
No, and it's based upon, again, that's based upon, again, we're not, that's based upon the, our representative who's here is Bill Fitzgerald. You know, who's basically been advising us as far as, you know, the best use of the property and who we could market it to and, and, and so on. So.
And did you testify before the Historic Commission when they had their hearing on whether or not to move forward with this as a single parcel historic district?
No, we unfortunately, we missed that. Yeah, it was probably, again, that was our error, you know, it was overlooked. Something that we probably, you know, I regret that we didn't get involved in this earlier. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion now. You know, I readily admit, you know, you know, take a little bit of mea culpa here, is that, you know, we should have been much more involved in this earlier than we, what we came with regard to it. So.
So is it fair characterization that you failed to testify before the Historic Commission by your own essential oversight?
That's probably fair. I do recall, though, that we did send some type of communication, some with regard to this back there. I just don't have all the details with regard to our opposition on it. But we did not attend the Historical Commission meeting or testify. That's correct.
Thank you. So relative to the status before the Historic Commission, and Chairman Walsh, this might be, you know, most appropriate for you. This appeared before the Historic Commission earlier this year. Can you walk us through the process that followed that?
Well, it's a two, it happened to have in a couple of steps. One was just an informational meeting. And where people introduced what they thought, why they thought it should be a historic property. And then we scheduled the meeting to put it on our agenda for, for a vote. And opened it up to people who wanted to speak for and against. And, and there was no one who spoke against. And I have no recollection or paperwork telling me that something came in writing from them against it. And then, so following the several processes that the Historic Commission follows, we had our public hearing, we opened it up for for and against, and then we took the vote to send it to the City Council, and the person vote was, we sent it to the City Council.
Do you remember the, the vote passage number? Was it unanimous? Was there any opposition?
Well, the first one, the first informational meeting vote was not unanimous. It was four to one, four, four and one against. And in the second meeting, I believe it was unanimous. Because there was no opposition whatsoever.
And what, where does Mass Historic fall on this? Because there's a portion after your initial vote, I know that it's reviewed at the state level in some capacity. Can you explain that to us?
Well, we always, we, one of our votes is to send it to them for their opinion.
Okay.
And they send it back, and they found it to be historic, you know, the design and the age, and that it, what should be considered for historic preservation.
So based on the architectural significance, the historical significance, it passed both the Historic Commission and had a favorable recommendation for Mass Historic.
That's correct.
So my final question is, is for the, the Law Department and Attorney Shay or, or Judge Payne, whichever one of we feels is, is most appropriate. Is there any particular concern currently relative to its legislative path thus far?
Yes.
Okay, can you share that with us?
Can you? If I may, if I may sit here, please. Let me, there's, let me just go over what actually brings us here. And this, the Historic Commission in the city is generally operated well and, and, and in passing these districts. And in this particular case, we would probably move forward had we not received the letter from the owners of the property, which I think the council had a copy of that letter indicating in the letter that they were opposed to the property being put in a historic district. And they further in that letter alleged that if we proceeded, that they would exercise their legal rights if they felt that there had been something out of the ordinary. And it's at that junction, one at the last City Council meeting, I asked, and fortunately, the council was going to move to set this meeting up anyway. Because I felt that the city needed, a lot of people need to explain, look into the fact that when an individual or a company makes accusation or it's not a threat, but points out that, you know, we're going to look into this and see what our legal rights are and protect us. Our job is to protect the city from suits and to make sure that whatever occurred has followed the statutes. Okay, so with that background, I'm just going to go over, I have two, two issues as a result of that letter that I think are important and, and expose the city to some litigation and that we, you need to hear about it. The first one that I want to go over is really the authority of how a historic district is created. Section three, the start districts are created basically under chapter forty. And sections three and four outline the procedure that needs to be followed for the Historic Commission to operate and do that in compliance with the law. Okay, so the proposed historic district and all districts shall be made by the Historic District Commission as provided in section three and four of chapter forty C. Now, section three states in part, and I'll read it. Prior to the establishment of any historic district in a city or town, an investigation and report on the historic go and architectural significance of the buildings, structures, or sites to be included in the proposed historic district shall, and that's important, shall be made by a historic district study committee or by a historic district commission as provided in the section three and four. Now, the Springfield Historic Commission is responsible for conducting the investigation and the desirability of establishing a district and developing a report. And that report is then made available to the public for a public hearing. So it's the Historic Commission's requirement under the law to do those steps. Okay? Now, in the case at hand, the Springfield Historic Commission failed to do its own independent study and report as required by chapter forty C. The commission simply took testimony from an applicant publicly advocating for the creation of a historic district. And based upon the testimony created, that testimony, they created a historic district. This is in total violation of Mass General laws, chapter forty C. The entire process was, it's sort of like if you go into court.
Okay.
And you're, let me, let me.
Let me finish. So first of all, this is my time, Attorney Shay, and you answered.
Well, I'd like to finish the comment.
I'm going to let you finish the comment, but I, but I understand and through the chair respectfully, I understand that you're raising a concern that the Historic Commission did not accurately carry out or appropriately carry out the process as they should have. Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Okay. So Chairman Walsh, can you speak to how this process, how this, you know, what your view on this is, or do you have a view on it?
Certainly have a view on it. It's, it's very interesting to hear that take this time because we're represented by council at every meeting that this came up on.
And what council represents you? Who in the Law Department?
It was Attorney Shu.
Okay, and what administrative do you, administrative support do you receive through the city of Springfield? That's through the Office of Planning and Economic Development?
Yes.
And who is your contact there?
Jelisa, Bill, Brown. We've got to sign them together. And it had been, um, Alvin, Alvin, you know, he's been stepped down, but I think he's still in the background. We're back again, Jelisa this year. So part of that is when we're around our table, we know a building, we know a style, and we know an age. We're able to, without outside make the assessment that it's historically significant and should be potentially protected as opposed to you know, whether we should have had the, I don't want to, I can't even get into all the details of what might happen under that paragraph. We did accept the information given to us. We, it's a general procedure for us that you accept information from the Preservation Trust always, and we send it to the state, and the state sends back a letter giving support or not relative to the, to the property.
And that's for Mass Historic?
For Mass Historic. So.
My understanding has historically been, and we passed, you know, historic, we've passed many historic districts throughout just my six years on the council, let alone the history of the historic districts in the city, but is the Mass Historic report not considered the report that you're referring to?
I, I don't think that that's you addressing.
Yeah, Attorney Sheen.
I'm sorry.
So is the, is the mass, I've always, I've always. Thought the mass historic report is considered a study.
The, first off, the historic commission is supposed to do a study. Okay, an independent study done by either the historic commission or a study committee. Okay? And that report is then sent to the mass commission who looks that over and approves it. Okay? So in this case, there was a report. The report was generated by, not by the historic commission, which is required under forty C. Okay, it was prepared for them. By the mass preservation, the Springfield Preservation Trust. Yeah, I had a copy of it right here.
Digital copy.
So that's, that, what I want to refer to is the front page of that report. And it, okay, so it says. This is the front page of the report. It says, prepared for the Springfield Historic Commission by the Springfield Preservation Trust. March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Now, the problem is that the Springfield Preservation Trust is an advocate for. The district.
Right.
And the statute requires that the historic commission be independent. You've got an advocate for some, which is nothing wrong with advocating, but you've got the advocate. Advising and instructing and providing the paperwork to the commission.
They adopted this report as, as their.
They, they did. Now, and it's, but it, let me give you this example. It's, 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 so you go into court and you're a defendant. And there's no plaintiff there and the judge says, well, tell me about your case. What would you like? Well, I, I didn't do the crime. I'd like to get off and that decision is made. There's no.
So I don't necessarily, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your leeway, but I, I, I wanted to see us through to the logical conclusion. So. How does this differ? From, for example, the last historic district we did was the Kitteridge building, which by the way, was not supported by the owner either.
Okay.
So in the Kitteridge building, what did, what did they do?
Here, in the beginning, here, here's why I think we're here having this discussion now. Is that the historic commission, and there's nothing wrong with it. They've gone along, they've taken their reports and they've done the process. In this particular case, we received a letter. Threatening legal action against the city to protect their rights. And so when that occurred, we in the law department went back and looked. At the process of all the steps that should by the statute be followed. And we find that the, the exact following of the statute and the language, when it, when the statute says shell, you've got to do what it says. And we followed that. If we had not received that letter. We wouldn't be here. We would have proceeded right on. Okay, and that was the purpose of having this meeting so that this law department could look into this and see. What legal exposures the city has, and we feel that this is a critical one because it was not done according to the statute. No, no, I don't, I don't want to be, we're not putting fault on the historic commission. That's, that's the way we've done almost all of these chapters. Okay, and, and, and if you allow me, we've got another issue. Which supersedes this, which I think is even more. Exposing the city to more liability than even this may. Okay, okay.
I'd like to hear the second.
Actually, yes.
All right, so the second one. Involves what we call a, an abuse of police powers of the city. Okay, and so. Uh, the changing of the age requirement of the building to be classified from historic from one hundred years to seventy-five from. Yeah, from one hundred to seventy-five years. Okay, uh, is the issue that I think that the. Um, opponent, the owners of the property could raise here. Okay, so the city of Springfield has a long. Uh, used the common standard of the building to be qualified historic had to be a hundred years old. Okay? So when you look at the facts in this case. At the city council meeting on November twenty-eighth of twenty-two. The council heard testimony for a zone change of the hospital property on State Street. Now, most of the testimony at that meeting centered on the historic aspects of the property. Given by an individual concerned about the demolition of the building. Now, about eight days later, after the meeting on the twenty-eighth. Eight days later, at the city council meeting on December fifth. An order was approved changing the time requirement for a building to be historic from one hundred years to seventy-five years. This change has a major impact on the property rights of the owners of the property on State Street. And while the change would impact the whole city. The only item under consideration at the time of this change was the hospital property and the proposed new historic district. Which was comprised of just one building. So a reasonable person could conclude and the owner of the property could probably conclude that this was being done to target the hospital building. There is no, there is also nothing in the record that shows that the owner of the property was given notice that the property was going to, this property is going to be impacted. Now, a property owner under these circumstances. Could claim that they were targeted and subject to an abuse of the city's police power. And that this action could be interpreted as a clear and arbitrary abuse of that power. I mean, it's only eight days. It's the only building. They go from a hundred to seventy-five, uh, which had that not been done, the building would not qualify for this. Now, under the police power, and this is, um. I found a mass case, Boston Elevated Railway versus the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And they use this language. Under the police power, there is no unrestricted authority. To accomplish whatever the public may presently desire. And a contention that action is being taken under the police power of the state cannot justifiably disregard any constitutional inhibitions. There's another case, not a local case in the district court, um. Not from this area, but US District Court, where the court states that the states have a wide discretion. To determine when and what circumstances they will exercise their police power. And the courts will not interfere accepting cases of clear and arbitrary abuse. And there's. The fact pattern here clearly gives, I don't know if they would succeed, courts are reluctant, not quick to jump on this type of issue. But they, uh, there's clearly a fact pattern here to bring that into a suit. If the owners of this property decide to do so.
So Attorney Shea, the ordinance that you're referring to, that I don't see how the ordinance on the demo delay has any bearing on the creation of the historic district. The ordinance you're referring to and the change that was made was relative to. The definition of historic within that ordinance and what would can be considered historic to trigger demo delay. But it doesn't, is not, to my understanding, an, a number of years that a building has to be. In order to be put into a historic district, and if there is, it's not as a result of that ordinance.
Well, if you're a building, building under.
Building would not be eligible to be a historic district but for that ordinance, right?
It would be eligible to be a historic building, but I think the demolition piece is much stronger when it's of the hundred years. And I'm just saying that this is a, this is something that they could, because ultimately this. By doing that, this almost becomes a taking as opposed to anything else. It's almost like an eminent domain taking. This property now, they can't tear it down. They're going to be in a historic district and it, I think, ties their hands. Now, I'm, I'm pointing this out because. I looked at this as a potential issue facing the city if something comes up. Okay, that's what this is. That was the purpose of comment. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Are you?
Oh, no, no, I was just trying to get, uh, avoiding my turn.
Actually, um. Counsel Donovan, I believe you should be next.
Well, yes, except anybody has spoken.
Yes, I mean, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Leibman.
And just, just a real quick, just, uh, Counsel Hurst is off, he has joined us. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, Attorney Sheen, thank you so much for, for those, uh, presenting this point and, uh, for doing your due diligence and protecting the city. Uh, we always have to make sure that people's expertise is wise to use. Uh, but I do have some, some questions. Uh, first, I have to say that, uh, the second point that you raised in the review of the, of the. Overuse of police power of the city, uh, and Council Leibman pointed out to this, this is, uh, triggering a demolition, like you yourself mentioned. So, uh, after review, so that people are fully aware of what we're talking about, after review of by the historical commission and the powers to be. Uh, if the team that appropriate the process could move forward. Um, so just to point that out, because I did alter that piece of legislation that you referred to, uh, as a potential, uh, uh, issue, the city. Uh, when I started looking at the ordinance at the time, I asked the question, where the hundred year threshold came from? And the answer was, it's just a number. And whether we do hundred years, whether seventy-five years, or if it's a hundred years, is ours going to be some sort of a issue with a number. Uh, and just to point that out because of, uh, uh, of, of the, the, the. So everyone is clear of what we're talking about. Now. Uh, Mr. Chair, if you just allow me, I have a quick question, one for, uh.
Can I, can I respond to that comment you just made on the hundred? It's.
Uh, briefly, yes.
When you, when you look at historic districts and you look at buildings, it, the hundred year standard. Is pretty common. There's a few places that have seventy-five, okay, which is what we've done here. And the point is that by going from si- a hundred to seventy-five, it adds another burden and another. Claim and another problem for the owners of this property that they wouldn't have had had it been left at seventy-five. And, and my purpose was simply to look through the facts and find potential claims that the city would be forced to defend. This is one of them.
I, I thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
That's all this is.
I, I think, I'm, I'm going to do the, obviously, if you're allowing me, just two questions, uh, uh, to, uh, I don't see him, oh, there it is. Uh, Doug, a question for you, sir. Uh. Can you hear me, Doug?
Yes.
Yes, uh, so just that we clear, going back to the basics. So we are talking about the isolation hospitals. On State Street, this is fourteen forty-one State Street. There's, uh, fourteen forty, sorry, fourteen forty.
State Street, yes.
Correct, uh, so there's two buildings there. Uh, if you're facing the building to the right-hand side is the actual building, enormous isolation hospital, which has been empty for years. Correct?
That's correct, yes.
And thus, well, specifically what we're talking about, to the left is Vibra Hospital. Another building, which also pretty, pretty old, I think, look like Mercedes.
Fifties.
That's what they used to be spoken about, just to be, to be transparent to the people that are watching us at home.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct, yes. And they particularly, they have a common wall. And a, there is an entrance that you can go through that apparently is locked at this point in time. And, you know, and to basically, basically prevent anybody from entering in there because it is, it, because of its condition.
Right, right. All right, thank you, Doug. Uh, and Mr. Chair, I have a sitting question to the, uh, either to, uh, Team, Team Sheen or Judge Payne, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, I believe that. Somebody said that, I think it was Doug, actually. Uh, this. The objection from the owners that's basically going to keep them from selling the building. I also heard the word being demolished. Before. And I believe Doug said that the mayor opposes the idea of using the isolation hospital as housing. Uh, by the way, if you're allowing me, Mr. Chair, I have to say that with regards to the, um, um, threshold, uh, lower from a hundred years to seventy-five years. Uh, the mayor did not sign that ordinance and it became law, so this does come as Attorney Sheen, he pointed out, is to allow the land. So the question to you, gentlemen, if I, if I, oh, is. Uh, why is the mayor opposing the use of this building for, for housing? Why, why is this such an issue? Because it seemed to me that was sort of the problem. I would just love to hear. The thought, if you're prepared to speak on that today.
I'm not, um, I'm not here of. Taking any policy position with respect to what the mayor or the administration does or does not want to do. My concern is the liability to the city. Should this action, uh, go forward as it is proposed to go forward right now. Uh, as, uh, Attorney Shea indicated. I think that Vibra could make a claim, uh, that this is a constructive taking, it's constructive eminent domain. Which could open the city to significant liability. And as a result of that, the city is going to end up having to defend the, uh, uh, the city and the historical commission as part of our, uh. Uh, our response, uh, responsibilities. Uh, but I, I, I think there's some clear issues of liability and, you know, quite frankly, uh. If, if we get sued by Vibra, uh, I'm going to reach out to, uh. Anybody that was involved in this, uh, I'm going after the Springfield Trust. I'm going to plead them into the case. Um, uh, because I, I think that the actions, uh, that, uh, they took with respect, not that I'm saying they're doing anything illegal, but they, they. Took this action of filing this paperwork, which the historical commission apparently adopted and used as their, uh, uh, response, at which point, uh, uh. We're, we're going to face liability. That's my, that's my issue.
I understand. I just, if I may, just as, uh, as follow up to that, uh, I, I, again, I know you find gentlemen are doing your due diligence. Uh, but with that, I will say, we wouldn't be in this position. If we had a historical commission specialist. On staff, because I know it's just been spoken about, at least since I've been in the council for years now. And we don't have anybody, so if, if, if falls upon the good, good people, good people, social preservation trust and others. To ensure that our history is not erased out of the map. And I'm not suggesting anybody wants to do that, but this is a problem, well. When you guys are, are arguing, a problem that was created within. And so I take this moment to advocate for historical commission specialist on the books, on the staff, so that the proper, um. Banning out be completely done. In the absence of specialists, we have to rely on others. So I'm not going to take the word of people who have a financial interest in this and telling me whether or not this should be demolished or this should be a historical, uh, building. Uh, so thank you, uh, Judge Payne for that. And if I may, Tim, I really would love to hear your thoughts about why, if you could, um. The administration position is not to use this for housing?
There was context around that, uh, obviously, you know, we, we are fully supportive of creating additional housing in the city. Um, the context was the, the size of the development and, uh, the capital stack structure, uh, to support that development.
I'm just going to finish with this, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I said, uh, I, thank you. I, I think there's more to that context you gave, you know.
But it was just as, uh, it was a, a very, very, I want to say it was upwards of three hundred units that were being proposed in one location.
I understand. I understand. I also, uh, I'm going to close this to this, um. I believe, Council Leibman correctly, if I'm mistaken, but I will, two years ago, we saw a report from UMass. And we say that Springfield is going to be facing a shortage of five thousand units, two or ten, ten thousand units in housing. Uh, today I came from office hours and this lady was crying. Because she has no place, she can't find housing in the city of Springfield. The policy will be decided, but housing is essentially here in the city of Springfield. Uh, and to me, that's not a good reason, uh, if anything, we should become more and more housing, but Mr. Chair, uh, this is my question. And gentlemen, I can thank you for your due diligence. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, well. I, I, I had a couple of things. I think we've gotten away from what the real issue is, is whether or not we can create a historic district. The reasoning why the mayor would or would not be supportive of housing there is not before us. Uh, I believe that. We have established historic commissions in the past without the concern for litigation. Um. Been on the council, you know, for fourteen years and been involved with at least five lawsuits. I know the law department is critically on the staff. But rarely has a council had, we had been forced. To not vote for something for fear of litigation, whether it's the closing of a bar. The creation of this historic district, solar, uh. Cell tower, cannabis dispensary. That's why we have a law department is to defend the interests of the city. And from my interpretation of what has been transpired and shared back and forth is not a legitimate. In my mind, the fact that. In my mind, the fact that it's difficult for the owner of a private entity to be able to market it. Or his impact on being able to market it. Well, as long as this operation operates in the city, I I represent them as well. But I believe that the historic commission operated appropriately with the information they had. If there was a failure along that path, when there was an attorney representing the city present. And they didn't catch this, then, you know, we're kind of behind beyond that point. But the part, I guess the point, I'll just simply say this. Um my recommendation, and I don't know if it'd be appropriate for us, the establishment of Quorum is named by myself as a member of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. And my president uh establishing the Quorum as a member of that committee. Is that we bring this back to the committee of the whole. Present a synopsis of what has been described here today. And then vote for it, either vote it up or vote it down. And to be honest with you, if I typically, it's not a special permit, so I don't think I'm restricted in terms of being a jurist. But my feeling is I vote for the historic district. And then let the law department defend the interest because your interest should be. The will of the council and the citizens of Springfield, not the private owner of a building. Who obviously doesn't want to be a historic district and which is the same thing with every other historic district unless. That I can imagine, it was always somebody in the district who was concerned. The last time I think this came up was the establishment of the SRA's oversight, the override district where there was many people who said. My business has been there a long time, even if it's an empty parking lot, I shouldn't have to be a part of this, and we moved forward with it anyway. Under the potential threat that they could sue, because their interest had been damaged and I don't necessarily agree that this is a taking. Or could cost be described legitimately in court as a land taking, but I'm not an attorney, I'm not the brightest bulb on the show. Uh to quote my mother, uh but the reality is that my recommendation, if I was, you know, I know, you know. We've asked my colleagues on on either side for their final comments, it is that. Bring it back to the committee of the whole. Um and let them vote, either it passes. Or it doesn't, it's not the end of the world for us as a city, if they threaten to sue, let them sue. That's why we pay the law department to do it, but. The message should go back to the administration and the law department. That if you are chronically under staff, or if there's a question of competence in the law department. Because if you had an attorney there as a part of this process with the historic commission to lay at their feet as you may have done something wrong. Then that should have been caught along that path back then, and if it wasn't. Well, I'm not casting any dispersions, but that's my feeling, and I'd like to give an opportunity to some of my colleagues. Tim hasn't spoken yet, so I'm gonna start with Tim, then I'll come back over to Counselor Davila.
Yeah, thanks, Mister Chair, um I just wonder, uh hearing everything here. And having been involved in a couple of conversations since we put this in committee a week ago. Um I just wonder who it serves. Um if does it make something better if we were to vote for this to be a historic district? I'm not sure what the value of it is, and and there may be some, I may just not see it, but. The owner doesn't, apparently doesn't want it. I'm not sure what it does for housing. We tried to give uh the owner more options, there was a proposal for a zone change. Which failed by one vote, um I don't know, I I know I voted for the zone change, thought it would give them more options. Um if we vote for for this, how does it improve things? Uh besides whether the process was right and and with all due respect to Mister Walsh, I'm sure. Running the Springfield Historical Commission is is a hard job at times, and these things, there've been a few of these historic districts, but. When all is said and done, I think the things we do, the actions we take as a council should improve the city. And I'm sitting here with my lawyers, including former judge and city solicitor. Uh Mister Payne saying he recommends against it, with Mister Shea with however many years of legal expertise. And former counselor recommending against it. And we haven't heard that, you know, total of uh comment maybe by Mister Sheen, but. Uh you know, forgetting like who did we cross the T, did we dot the I, forgetting that stuff. Is this better, does this make the city better, we do this in the in the in the in the near term? Maybe it's something that could be done, maybe in the far term, maybe it does. But in the near term, I I'm not sa- sitting here seeing how it improves anything. The owner doesn't want it, the law, the lawyers are right recommending against it. And because we did it right and we proved we did it right, we should go forward. I I know that we got a budget coming up. Uh we'll start meetings on that and we'll be complaining about legal fees we have to pay and lawsuits we have to pay, so why would we? Take on something which could increase the damages or whatever things the city would have to pay. When we're always trying to reduce that, usually, most of them are you, that I know of are usually. Really related to police misbehavior or whatever. But when we got um, when we got, what I've what I've heard here in the last hour. I I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing why it makes, how it makes things better.
Well, I'd love me to, first of all, be very respectful of your opinion, and I do respect your opinion. Uh if you remember back, I think one of the last lawsuits that we had to deal with under whom so Attorney Bakula was here. My concern when I get opinions from the law department is their loyalty, and that came out in the conversation that I had was is is their loyalty. When I hire an attorney, the attorney represents my interest. If we don't, um we can blanket assume that, you know, like, I don't expect them to explain why. The mayor would be opposed to this being housing, I can imagine that it could be something as simple as. Yes, we have a dire need for housing, but I'm not a fan of having that many people concentrated in one spot. Particularly that particular spot, but that's not trying to find out. But I don't necessarily, and this is no respect to the law department, but if I hire a lawyer, the lawyer represents my interest.
Yeah, I I'm not gonna sit here.
Well, you can do it.
I'm not gonna be pumed on our integrity.
I didn't impugn your integrity, so.
Well, you get to interpret however you want, and I'll interpret the way I intended and say it, so I didn't say what you, I did not mention your name.
You didn't have to mention my name, you mentioned my department's name, and that's enough.
Well, look, you mentioned my department's name, you're mentioning me.
Look, this meeting is adjourned, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting before I tell this man what to do.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen. Gentlemen.
All we're gonna do is cause this this.
A distraction. No, let him go. Melvin didn't do anything wrong, this guy, come on, let's go.
No, I didn't tell him what. Melvin, Melvin. Guess he don't know, but Mister Chairman.
If I may, get my.
Please, somebody say something, because I'm ready to go home.
So what, what, wait, if.
And I did, if I offended somebody other than him.
May I have the floor, Mister Chair, just like, okay, so my question is, I just wanna keep going, um. When you say. You're worried about legal actions, correct, as a lawyer, right, you're a lawyer, correct? If you were, if you represented me and the actual person who wanted to have legal actions against me. Never showed up. I mean, if they never showed up, what would you tell me as far as me worrying about the person bringing legal actions on me?
I'm not following the question.
Well, the actual owners who the counselor petitioned, right? You following me, we've asked the majority owners and I'm sure the guy. Um who's a minority, there's more than one majority owner to come and sit in front of us, they haven't sat in front of us, correct?
That's true.
So. We haven't seen them. Right?
Well, other than right here, yeah.
So what do we have to be afraid of them for?
It is.
As, no, I'm saying, uh if I was your client, would I have to be afraid of an individual like that?
It comes down to a legal issue, not whether you personally seen the.
No, I'm saying legally, legally, as a businessman, this individual never showed up.
Okay.
You're gonna tell me if I hire you, I have to be afraid of this individual?
We're not telling anyone, counsel, to be afraid, okay? The issue here is whether they show up or they don't show up.
Mm hmm.
And I'm representing you.
Right, you say.
I'm trying to keep you out of trouble.
Yes.
The fact is that if we wind up in court and he shows up there.
I I appreciate, I.
Have a problem.
I appreciate what you do, I appreciate what you do, but you know where I come from, so say, even like I know this. People who've gotten to serious problems.
Yeah.
And then now the actual person who has an issue, they don't show up. And they don't show up again, and they don't show up again, the lawyer will sit there and tell you, well, this guy's really not showing up. You don't have to really worry about that stuff.
I I don't think you can give legal advice based on the fact that one party doesn't show up.
Yeah.
Rights and and things that have to be followed, okay? And I don't know how you're tying it into this case, but let me, the owners of this property have rights.
Yes.
And if we proceed along a certain course of action, they feel as though their rights were violated in that process.
Yep.
They will most likely show up and will be in court, that's.
And 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 as an individual, no, excuse me.
Yeah.
As an individual who represent a group of constituents.
Yeah.
Do you think we're afraid of him?
I don't, it isn't a question of whether you're afraid or not.
We don't even think he's a non-existent landlord.
We're going down the wrong path here, let me.
And 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 one more thing, sir, I'm gonna pass it.
That's all right.
I want. I I don't, I don't care about how, I want elderly housing, maybe for, maybe let's fix it up for somebody who wanna do elderly. For our veterans, I think people don't understand, oh, everything got closed down, where are elders? We got an elderly place right there, that's my area, brother, okay, so. It's more inside baseball than you guys think, there is no reason why this guy isn't here.
Well, that, I we, I can't answer that from this standpoint, but let me, let me back up and and I'd like to just say. A few words in defense for Judge Payne, he left here, and 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 the comment, the the law department. Job is to try to protect the rights of of the city of Springfield, and it isn't a case of. Picking out something that one perceives, you think the mayor wants one time or something the council wants another time. The question comes in front of the law department, and I did some research and came.
Wait, wait, can I? If if my kid, if my, can I ask you this, if my kid, if my kid was on trial, right?
Yeah.
And I gave you a boatload of money. And the actual person who was gonna go against them never show up against them. And I say to you, well, what is my chances? This guy's never showed up, what is my chances for my son, you're my counsel, are you gonna say, well, you know what, let's be honest now? And that's the problem, you guys aren't big, now, come on.
That's a nice hypothetical question, it's not something that that pertains into this meeting. The answer would be if you were going into court and your son was accused and the other person didn't show up, he probably.
Never showed up.
And your your kid would win.
Yeah.
So, but let's let's go back, I've I've lost my train of thought where I was, that the the law department. In in defense of Judge Payne, and 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 I understand emotions get in here, Noah, believe me. It is to try to protect the overall rights of the city. And and sometimes people say, oh, you're doing this because of the mayor, or you're doing this because of the city council, or you're doing this because of this commission, but. We're blind to that, we simply take the facts as I did, I looked at the procedure. And my conclusion is that there was, the procedure was not followed according to the rule, it had nothing to do with what the mayor thinks. Nothing to do with what you think, it had nothing to do with what I think, I. I looked at it and I came to those conclusions.
And I can be.
Same thing, it's the same thing when they abuse police power, that is a hypothetical. But it's a real hypothetical, and if the case could be made for that. And the reason that I asked for this meeting, that got us here, was that a threat has been made. Okay, and not a threat, but it has indicated that.
That adjective you could use.
My job, I advise Judge Payne and you is, well, we ought to look and see. Maybe there's no, maybe there's nothing here, maybe this is just an error and we'll go on.
Yeah.
But there potentially could be, now it may never come to pass, and we've simply put on the table. You, the council is gonna have to make a decision.
And and.
Okay, and you now have facts in front of you.
Yes.
You're free to go and make any decision you want.
Yes.
And and we're not saying don't make that decision.
Well, see, the thing is, is it the the, it went sideways, first of all, when he was out of order to make the comments to me to start with, he didn't have to defend the law department. Because it went, I'm entitled to my opinion, just like my colleague at the other end of the table, when he said about the district trying to be rezoned and they witnessed, they didn't. He voted for it, and one person didn't, or we lost by one vote, that was as a pain. I was trying to share my opinion and my thoughts and my mindset on it, because he asked the question, is is that how does it benefit the city? Well, it benefits the city from my perspective, because we maintain, or I'll take a step toward. Maintain or continuing historic property in the city of Springfield. Because so much of our historic, once it's gone, it's gone, and so these are one of the things, historic properties is one of the things that do draw tourists. To the city of Springfield because of our historic property, there are people who actually like to look at it and study it, so there is some benefit. I wasn't trying to get into an argument or a tit for tat, and I apologize if I wasn't articulate enough for where, but for him to. Feel like he had to charge up, yell at me like that, wasn't appropriate, because he don't know me. He don't know me, most of my, some, and that's the thing, and you saw my response.
Hmm.
This ain't no damn plantation, so he don't owe me, you can't just talk to me like that, because I didn't talk to him that way, he's the one that started it. I can share my opinion, my thought was, let's just go back. And let, bring it to the committee of the whole and let them vote up or down, just like we do on any issue. If there's any legal recourse for it, then we will defend it or we will deal with it.
Right.
But don't impugn my integrity and say that I'm not entitled to my opinion. And Mike, and I'm trying to share my comments and because you don't like the vernacular that I use, that you can just jump up and start yelling at me. Because you don't know me like that.
Mister Chairman, might I, might I make a suggestion?
Please, because I'm I'm ready to go.
I know that Counselor Hurst would like.
Oh, Counselor Hurst, I apologize.
But I finished the suggestion.
Yeah.
Then I know that Counselor Hurst would like to be heard, I I think that Counselor Davila would like to be heard, I actually have a motion. So i- if it might be appropriate to to hear Counselor Hurst and Counselor Davila, and then I would perhaps like to be recognized for motion at your discretion.
Sure, Counselor Hurst, please, if you would mind your thoughts about it.
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh I'll just say that, and listening to Attorney Shea. There is no doubt that he's raised some valid concerns. And that the city of Springfield very well may be subject to litigation if we move forward. Um I also know that. There is no reason why the city of Springfield can't defend themselves. And, you know, I would argue that what I'd like to see is for the same way Attorney Shea. It is due diligence and arriving at the conclusion that we could potentially be sued. That he also do the same due diligence to see whether there are valid arguments. To be able to defend ourselves, and for me, that would make my decision a bit easier. In terms of how is that I vote when this comes back before us, and. You know, the reality that we have to deal with as well as uh, you know, as individuals on this governing body. Is that we can always be sued, and I think anytime we have to make any decisions on this body. Oftentimes, they are subject to potential litigation, and so, you know, it's nothing new. I think for some of us here today, you know, we find ourselves on the opposite end of it. Uh but for me, the potential of being sued has never been an issue and certainly hasn't dictated. How it is that I govern, especially if I believe in what it is that, you know, I'm I'm fighting for. So um and then lastly, to Counselor Edwards's point. I think he's made a valid point that this body has been advocating and fighting for for a long time. I'd like to hear from somebody outside of the law department, and so even if Attorney Shea goes back and does his due diligence and comes. Back to the city council and says, you know what, I don't think we can defend this if we are sued. I don't think we can defend this if we are sued. I'd like to hear from somebody that is not associated with the administration. And so the idea that Judge Payne believes that folks can act independently, I, 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 I believe that if Judge Payne, um, you know, looks at it objectively, he'll understand what it is that I know. Uh, it is extremely, extremely difficult for any attorney in that law department to act, uh, independently, um, and certainly not to act in concert with the mayor's wishes. Uh, it is extremely difficult to do so. And, you know, I, I just think it's about time that the city council get outside counsel, um, on issues as sensitive as these. With that said, Mr. Chair, uh, I appreciate the vibrant discussion. Um, and I hope, I'm hopeful we can come up with a resolution.
Counselor Davila?
Uh, if you give me some chair, uh, I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be a motion made shortly, but I, I, in my humble opinion, I think that, I, I concur with you, Mr. Chair, that we should present this, uh, to, to the body for a vote, open down and move on with this particular issue. But, Mr. Chair, if you indulge, Mr., uh, the, as being mentioned, uh, the Preservation Trust has been mentioned quite a few times during this discussion. And I know we have a representative here from the Preservation Trust. Uh, I will personally, uh, if you, uh, are unable to, I will to hear their perspective because they were brought up specifically several times in the discussion. So to know where you for me of my, of my decision.
Certainly, um.
I, I, I will speak on our behalf, uh, here. Uh, great discussion and I love the thorough, um, look that the law department did. Um, and also I'm very, um, happy to see Attorney Yo here as well. Um, and I would like to talk about process, the demo delay ordinance, marketing and benefits. Those are the key things I think, um, our organization could add some assistance. Um, so process, um, on the process of how this got put together, it's been pretty much, um, uh, described, uh, and, uh, to the, the point of the trust and the Springfield Historical Commission. It was our, our understanding that, that we followed, uh, the guidelines of Massachusetts law. Um, however, that's debatable given that we, we prepared on behalf of. So is it sub, is subcontracting? Oh, it seems like the answer is no. Um, I wanna point out that the Springfield Historical Commission is a volunteer organization. So if any liability by the city was taken on, it might be in the training of a volunteer organization as a official commission. Um, I do know that they do have, uh, consulting hours from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, com- planning commission. Oh, and, uh, and that that contract is currently out, uh, that as of today. If they wanted to talk with Shannon Walsh, the historic preservation consultant that they work with, her contract is out. So they would not be able to type, my understanding is they would not. She has no billable hours left in her contract until July one. That, that new, that new, um, in my understanding, uh, contract is being negotiated now for beginning Jan-, uh, July one. So if they wanted official opinion, they wouldn't have that resource. Um, to Counselor Davila's suggestion that there be a historic preservation full-time, you know, paid individual that oversees this work, that keeps an eye on how things should be done, I agree with that and it's something we've been advocating for as well. Um, but yes, I wanted to point out that maybe in the assessment from the law department, perhaps processes within the, if, you know, liability has been taken on, perhaps having a voluntary commission is something to be looked at as a, as a liability. And what training do they receive? How were they trained on the creation of local historic districts and, um, and, uh, and are they following the law in that? It was, uh, our volunteer, you know, private nonprofits, um, understanding of the law in me. Uh, we are, you know, advocates. We tried to look at all of this ourselves. We thought that the way that that was being handled was totally to, to the law. We read through the, um, the Mass Historical Commission's guidelines on how to do that, which point to, um, Massachusetts law. So, um, you know, it's plainly printed and it wasn't as if anyone was trying to go, uh, under the radar. It's plain on page one. So I wanted to put that out there because I will note that uh, Judge Payne himself said if anything went wrong here or we got sued as a that he would quote be going after the Preservation Trust as a part of all the parties. He said that sitting right there in this meeting. So I just wanna note that our, um, you know, I can't speak on behalf of our board completely, but my assessment of the situation and the way we, um, collaborate with the city of Springfield or the Springfield Historical Commission is that we try to protect properties in our city and we do it in the way that we believe that the law sets. So, um, if any, you know, I think that would be a great improvement if there had been some issue with it that we get it figured out because historic districts come before the commission all the time. Um, demo delay, would the, is this an example of abuse of police power? Was it a targeted action to the specific building? I would, to assist the legal department in their assessment, I would say no. Um, there are many buildings that are protected because of the reduction from one, um, the definition of properly, uh, protected buildings in that ordinance. Um, I'll name a list, uh, the Farm Bank at three ten State Street, built in nineteen twenty-four. The Spanish Christian Church, former Jewish temple on Chestnut Street, built in nineteen twenty-five. Our Deco Building at sixteen hundred Main, built in nineteen thirty-nine. The Carpenter Hall on Oakland Street, uh, from nineteen thirty-seven. Hippodrome Theater, nineteen twenty-six, being theater of nineteen forty. The building at the corner of Main and State of, uh, nineteen twenty-seven that were also proposed for demolition as part of the Court Square Hotel project, which I would say is a successful, beautiful project going on that I'm about to cite regarding, uh, marketing and benefits. Um, the Water Shop Armory, um, has many buildings from nineteen twenty-five and later that are also now protected. When that, uh, when that, uh, or, uh, ordinance amendment came before the city council, I was one of the public speak out individuals who spoke, uh, in favor on behalf of the trust for it, noting a number of communities around us which have an age of fifty years. Um, I, we noted all kinds of ages and seventy-five was quite conservative, actually. So, um, regarding the age, I, I was, you know, I, we of the trust advocated for seventy-five because we felt that was reasonable for our city and that it didn't put any undue stress on property owners. We have a lot of historic properties in this community and fifty years frankly would just be too much, too much for the city even, too much for the historical commission to have to see every demo delay that comes through. That is for the demo delay ordinance that, um, and Counselor Davila talked through that. It doesn't mean you can't demolish your building. Just means the historical commission needs to look at this building because we have, um, a bevy of historical resources in our city and we shouldn't just allow, um, for the benefit of our city an application for demolition on any old building. So, uh, I would say that the city to, you know, I'm not an attorney, but if I were to assess that from my position and understanding, I would not say that was an example of abuse of police power. I wanna talk about marketing because it's, it's wonderful that Attorney Yo is here um, on behalf of the owner to, to speak to this because I also, my day job, I'm a real estate agent. Um, and I'm very passionate about commercial and downtown and economic development of the city of Springfield. And it is, uh, my personal passion prior to even being involved with the trust uh, to, to move to a city, I moved here in twenty nineteen, to be involved with economic development downtown and with a specific focus on the historical aspect of this city. I would like to give a few examples of, um, buildings that were determined to be a, a, a local historic district and then were purchased as a benefit. Um, the benefit that comes with having, having a building that's a historic district and how that can be marketed. Um, so I wanna talk first about, um, I'll talk about a few, few buildings, but let's talk about my favorite so far, uh, Court Square. Um, so Wynn Companies is renovating thirty-one Elm Street as we know. Downtown is getting seventy-four units of market rate affordable and adaptive use housing. An entire ground floor of retail being reactivated. Uh, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the city of Springfield, Mass Mutual and MGM are jointly contributing forty-eight point five million in construction and permanent financing to the project. Mass, Mass Housing is acting as funding administrator on behalf of the public and private projects, uh, partner, uh, partners. Um, the city of Springfield and Springfield Redevelopment already completed approximately four million in environmental remediation work for that project prior to conveyance of the project site. So that's a nice benefit. Other funding resources include ten point eight million in federal and state historic tax credit equity and a deferred developer fee. Historic tax credits are only available if you're, you have a historically significant building and becoming a local historic district is the way to do that. Um, Bank of America is providing a total of twelve point two million in construction and bridge and permanent financing. When completed, this redevelopment will fully restore the historic property, preserving historical details while adding modern building systems and creating the seventy-four new mixed income apartments. Twelve thousand square feet of commercially active ground floor space, a two hundred seat restaurant, a gym and community space. This is a building that's been vac- vacant for decades. Um, not gonna go through all the information on those units, but I'm looking forward to seeing the, uh, all of that housing and that first floor activation created. Let's talk about another property, one sixty-nine Main, uh, Maple Street. Davenport Company, as of last week, uh, was announced three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funding to work on one sixty-nine Maple Street, a historic eleven-unit residential building um, that was waiting for redevelopment, just as Isolation Hospital is currently waiting. Davenport Company is another example of yet another historically-minded develop, uh, developer with success in our city. Let's talk about another building they did, uh, Willis Overland Building in two thousand nineteen for fourteen point five million dollars. Um, this building was built in nineteen sixteen for the Willis Overland Motor Company. It's been on the National Register of Historic Places since nineteen eighty-three for its connection to Springfield's early automotive history. And that building was neglected for many years as well and then was damaged by the November twenty-twelve gas explosion. That was kind of a big deal. And then the Willis Overland Local Historic District was created. And after that, after it was marketed, uh, appropriately marketed for those historic tax credits you can partake in, marketed for so many other local and state funding, you can get for specifically redeveloping historic properties. Um, Davenport Company bought it and renovated the building. Uh, all the last sixty of them are now occupied and the, and they even want a preservation work, of course. Um, I wanna skip to a couple of recent ones, National Needle Building. It'll be, I'll, if you, if you don't mind, fifty-five Emery Street. Um, this was one that was proposed for demolition. Proposed for demolition, um, the owner brought it up, um, in December twenty nineteen. His Springfield Historical Commission voted to establish a single building local historic district. A preliminary study report and an inventory form, uh, was prepared, sent to and accepted by Mass Historical Commission, as was done with this. We, I'd love to see that, uh, cuz I believe we were probably involved in it. Uh, but nevertheless, um, they held their public hearings, said the proposal City Hall passed in September twenty twenty. The building was sold for two point one five million in June twenty twenty-two and it's being redeveloped in itself, storage units, uh, by Devon Self Storage. Stockbridge Corp, Silverland Silver Brick Lofts, Gun Block. There are so many buildings in our city which are historically and architecturally significant. I'm, I won't go through a whole page on why this one is both of those, but it's been determined to be so by the Springfield Historical Commission, the Massachusetts Historical Commission. Our nonprofit which advocates for saving historic buildings in this city. Um, it's, the Preservation Massachusetts put it on its, um, most endangered historic resources in our state last year. Um, regarding marketing, I think this is a wonderful thing for the building and for the owners. I believe it would help you raise probably hundreds of thousand in, uh, funding or, and, and maybe Fitzgerald doesn't agree here, but, um, as somebody who is redeveloping a historic building downtown on behalf of the Springfield Preservation Trust ourselves have just gotten our first grant and are replying for a number of other local and state grants, having a local, having your building as a local historic district is a very good marketing tool and it has many benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If, if I'm, I'm, if you can, yes, you haven't spoken, please.
Well, I just, I almost wanted to bring it back to, you know, I'll, I'll pin back just since we're just, I wanna just go on the record with a couple of clarifications that things ever get to a legal position. One is we didn't adopt the information they gave us. We had entered into the public record. There's a big difference between two. Thank you. The meeting discussion is what we sent, is what we base ours on, which might not fit by the legal standard that he's looking for. But it's, we didn't take that, adapt it, say, that's how we did it. Um, and on the seventy-five years, the, uh, that has nothing to do with historic. It's not that the year doesn't mean a thing about historic. It only means that they have to see us before they can tear it down. That's all. There's nothing historic in that. It doesn't make it historic. It's over seventy-five years old. It can still be a piece of junk somewhere. It needs to be torn down.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think there was one other. We've gotten so far away of what my thoughts were earlier. There's one other. I just, give me a second to pull it in here.
And, uh. I think it's important. Take your time. It's just.
Well, I mean, in the, in the co- collaborative, you know, collaborative. I love the work they do, but we don't. I've never, ever had a discussion between us and among us about what should be on a piece of paper or not. Never. But they do good work and they put real facts in front of us and we enter into the public record, which is all different ballgame. And for, for legal, you know, from listening to the legal things, which I think almost seems like you handed them a legal issue. Uh, I wanted to take those four positions right there. Position I was the law. Now, I would love to have legal department. They determine that I can use the different procedures more effectively to protect us. I wanna know what it is and I want their help and their assistance in doing so. But I just needed to clarify those things and I'm all set.
Okay.
Um.
I, I think you did a good job.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to be recognized. Attorney Shay has not been recognized. I would like to see recognized.
Well, that's all right. I'm done.
Would you object to Counselor Allen speaking first?
I'm going to make a motion and me. So.
Second.
Uh, but I'm, I haven't made a motion yet. My intention is to bring us home, back to the point of this meeting and to make a motion to a chair.
I'm.
So that is, if you recognize me, that is what I'm going to.
I'm going to allow, uh, Counselor Allen to speak.
My, I don't have a comment to make. I just thought that the chief development officer had been here this whole time. And I just thought we should ask if he had anything to say. He has spoken a couple of times.
I, I, do you have to? Don't feel obligated.
There's very little like that. I don't think. I, I, I think it, it, the, the concern for me is the improvement of the process and ensuring that we're aligned with the statute, uh, in terms of what we're doing. And I, I think that's the direction that, you know, departmentally we need to move in.
And, and, and I'm gonna let him finish up with my final comment, which is exactly that. Um, I mean, I, I'm going to apologize for my obverse. Um, I would appreciate an apology from that gentleman as well because I got set off by the way, the tone that he came at me with. But I do apologize because it's what my, it's my choice and whether or not how I control my temper and my response to things that I think are inappropriate and I failed today and I apologize for that. And to the taxpayers and anybody who sees this, I do apologize for that part. But I expect an apology from this Judge Payne as well. That being said, uh, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague and I will reiterate what my thought was before was to make a, my recommendation. I don't think we should, but I mean, my colleague as voting members of the committee should make any recommendation, but I believe that we should bring this back to the committee as a whole and let the committee as a whole decide whether they want to table it, whether they want it to vote it up or down and let whatever feelings that have been hurt or any events be done, done, which is all I was really trying to get to the start with. Um, so that being said, I don't. Counselor, let me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, uh, you know, briefly, I appreciate the discussion. I think that the question that is before us, um, first and foremost is do we believe that the building should receive, um, historic protection? Do we believe it's historic and it should be safe? Um, I know what my feeling on that is and I think that, that we may all differ on that one way or another. But ultimately, that's the question before us. Um, relative to the process that is followed by the Historic Commission, um, whose service we certainly appreciate as, as volunteer commissioners, uh, who are directly appointed, uh, by the mayor of the city and who are supported uh, in terms of their legal, um, their legal counsel and their administrative support uh, by the mayor's administration through the Office of Economic Development and the Law Department. Relative to that process, uh, that process should be carried out correctly every single time. Um, and so I, uh, have understood Attorney Shay's position. I'm going to review, uh, that position and, and see whether I agree uh, that the process is not being followed correctly. But I would say to, uh, Director Sheehan, and I would say it to Solicitor Payne, had he chosen to remain. Uh, that the process is not being followed correctly, but I would say to, uh, Director Sheehan, and I would say it to Solicitor Payne, had he chosen to remain in the meeting. Um, you should be extremely concerned if that process has not been being followed, uh, because it was not followed. Uh, directly under the advice and counsel of the individuals who report to you. And I'm hopeful, um, that you too will be investigating that because you certainly should be. Uh, relative to, uh, the legal opinions that have been presented here today, I understand there was a threat of legal action. I would like to say for the record, I, I think it is odd for the law department to walk into a committee meeting and then. Present on public record a number of prospective legal challenges, um, that they could bring. And I will say that I have seen that done, um, many other occasions in the history of the city of Springfield, two of which, uh, include. Uh, the case on the establishment of Springfield Police Commission, uh, and another relative to, uh, biomass in the city of Springfield. And, uh, the law department, uh, in both of those cases was incorrect. And we, uh, were right and, and won on several of those cases. And so for folks who may have not, uh, had that history, I think that's where there sometimes is a concern. And I, 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 again, it's not necessarily a personal piece, uh, but it speaks to why we need to ensure that our government is structured in such a way. That all of our public servants can, uh, do their job in the best way possible. And so, um, with all of that said, um, at this time, I am going to make a motion, uh, that we refer this back. Uh, to the full body, uh, where I ensure more robust discussion will occur and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Counselor Brown is not a member.
Well, uh.
We appreciate.
The motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, gentlemen.